Okay. I'd like to call and order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for September 7th, 2013 at 3:10 PM. Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Sinayan.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. And we have your report.
The agenda for the September 17th, 2013, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, September 12th, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Charles.
Yes, sir. This is the Stage One Design Review hearing.
Mr. City Manager and Mr. Mayor, if I may read the item into the public record. First, Director of Community Development regarding proposed mixed-use project containing 166 dwelling units in retail on the ground floor to be located at 125 North Central Avenue. One A is a motion approving Stage One Design Review, subject to comments and conditions of approval. At One B is a motion returning submittal to the applicant for redesign based on comments and conditions. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. As indicated, the proposed project is at the corner of Central and Wilson, southwest corner. This would be improved by 166 units and about 15,000 square feet of retail space incorporated into one traditional architecture building. Our planner, Rather Dwong, is here to give you a staff presentation, as are the project applicants. Rather?
Good afternoon, Mayor Weaver and council. My name is Rather Dwong. I'm with the Community Development Department, Planning Division. The project that you will be considering today is a proposal by P.H. Glendale LLC, who is requesting approval of a Stage One conceptual design review for a new mixed-use project located at 125 North Central and 318 West Wilson Avenues. The subject site is comprised of two lots totaling about 59,500 square feet and located at the southwest corner of Central and Wilson, and is currently developed with two one-story commercial buildings. The project will include, this is the correction, 167 residential apartment units and about 15,000 square feet of commercial ground floors on the ground floor with a drive-through. The proposed project is six-story and approximately 89 feet high. The project will provide a total of 303 parking spaces, 52 of which will be on the ground floor, and 251 will be located in a two-level subterranean parking. Access to the parking facility will be off from Wilson Avenue. Staff has worked closely with the design team and recommends approval of the Stage One conceptual design with conditions and comments as contained in your packet. With that, I would like to turn to Rodney Khan and the design team for a more detailed presentation of the project. Thank you.
We're speaker. And I have your card. Gary Frye.
Gary Frye.
Frye, excuse me.
We're looking for the first slide if possible. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Weaver, council members, City Manager Ochai and staff. My name is Gary Frye, and I'm the Vice President of Development for the Malas-
Wait a second. How much time does the team need, you think?
Probably about 15 minutes.
Okay, set it for 15.
May begin.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
It's okay. Joining me today is the Chairman and Founder of our company, and also my stepfather, Mr. Erwin Malaski, as well as our company's President and Chief Operating Officer, Richard Worthington. I am joined by key members of our development team. Song Kim from the architectural firm of Humphries and Partners. Humphries and Partners Architects are award-winning architects that has provided design service for over 300,000 multifamily units throughout the world. Our real estate attorney, Alvin Goustian, born and raised in Glendale.
Welcome home. Unless you're still here.
Our zoning consultant and land use advisor, Rodney Khan, who I'm sure you all know. And at this point, I'm very proud to announce that our retail client and partner in this development is CVS Pharmacy. And we're supposed to have a representative here with us, and I don't know if he's here or he was stuck in traffic a little while ago. Our company has developed many high-quality projects across the United States, but I must tell you that the access and resources that we receive from the community development staff and employees of GWP Division is second to none. City Manager Ochai, thank you for your help and guidance in helping me through the design process. And I'd like to, special thanks to Hassan Hagani, Mark Berry, Alan Loomis, and Rather Dwong in their effort for getting the project to this point. I've had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and most of the council here. I know that I gave you a corporate brochure about us, but I'm going to give you a few little highlights about our company. The Malaski Group of Companies is a 65-year-old, multi-generational, family-owned development company based in Las Vegas. Our Chairman, Erwin Malaski, still comes to the office every day, and I have the privilege of working with my four brothers and sisters daily. We even have one grandchild that is working with the company now. Since 1960, we have built over 20,000 multifamily units throughout the western United States. All of our multifamily projects offer resort-style features, convenient locations, and professional management. It allows us to enjoy consistently high occupancy rates and unsurpassed amenities and service to our residents. Other notable accomplishments, we developed Sunrise Hospital, the first private hospital in Las Vegas with 200, or excuse me, 730 beds. This hospital is still the premier medical facility in Nevada. The Boulevard Mall with over 1.3 million square feet was the first enclosed mall in southern Nevada. We built the Bank of America Plaza Office Building, the first Class A office building in downtown Las Vegas. We are particularly proud of our accomplishments and sustainability. In 2007, we built the 285,000-square-foot Malaski Corporate Center, the first and largest privately-owned LEED gold-certified Class A building in the state of Nevada. We have since designed and constructed and owned five LEED-certified Class A office buildings. Years ago, we made a conscious decision to expand our development business and have added focus in doing public-private partnership projects. Say that five times quick. Consisting of government agencies, headquarters for companies like the Southern Nevada Water Authority, to four FBI field offices, to regional headquarters for the IRS, Social Security Administration, and the U.S. Secret Service, virtually all branches of the military, as well as a large facility for the National Archives Record Administration in St. Louis that houses over 30 different government agencies. Currently, we are working on high-quality, well-located, and highly amenitized multifamily projects in Portland, San Diego, Las Vegas, and of course, the project in Glendale. This project represents a development cost of over $50 million. 100% of this project is privately funded. We are not merchant builders and typically hold our projects for the long term. We think this makes a huge difference for the communities we build in, and our buildings have a more enduring aesthetic to them. We have a high degree of pride of ownership in each of our projects and typically build at the higher end of the markets we serve, incorporating into our projects rich architecture, thoroughly-designed landscaping, and amenities that provide a tenant-rich experience and a high standard of living. We currently own and operate over 5,000 residential units. We plan on owning and operating this project for many years to come. We look forward to a longstanding relationship with the city of Glendale and its residents. I would happy to answer any questions after everyone has spoken. Rodney, will you please take the podium?
Thank you, Gary. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan, and my offices are located here in the city of Glendale. As mentioned by staff, we are here today for a Stage One conceptual approval. Over the next several months, we will be working with your city staff on our environmental document, which includes all the SEQA environmental issues. We will also continue to work with your city staff to refine the design of our project. For my part of the presentation, I wanted to talk about the context of the neighborhood of where the site is located. As staff mentioned, our site is on the corner of Central and Wilson. The existing improvements are a mattress store, which is along Central Avenue, a public right-of-way, an alley that bisects the site, and then right now, there is a parking structure that has ancillary office space on the ground floor. This site is in yellow. It shows the context. We're literally a few hundred feet away from the Glendale Galleria and the Americana brand. So we're right in the heart of the downtown area. And as we all know, the city of Glendale has invested into the Americana originally, and now we're seeing a lot of the projects, both the Glendale Galleria now investing substantial money in it, and also the Americana expanding with the new Nordstroms. As Gary mentioned, a very important component to our project is the CVS Pharmacy and Convenience Store. And the reason it's so important is because, not just for our project, but also for the projects that are across the street from us, that were approved for the Brand Wilson, for the Orange Wilson, for Central Wilson, also for the hotels, and some of the other multifamily projects along Central Avenue. This CVS will serve as their pharmacy and will serve as their convenience store. And that's a real amenity for our downtown community that we don't currently have. A crucial part of our project for this downtown amenity that I spoke of is, our architect will speak of, is a drive-through for this CVS Pharmacy and Convenience Store. And that is a crucial part of it, and as this project continues to evolve and we continue to work on the project, we will certainly show you how that operates, along with our parking and our other circulation items. We did a little bit of outreach to our neighbors. We spoke to the commercial properties that are adjacent to us. We also spoke to the residential property that's directly to the west of our site. And I have a letter of support that I will hand to you, but I'd like to read you a small portion of that letter from the residential to the west on Wilson Avenue. And currently on that site is smaller multifamily units. But the likelihood is, is that when that site next to us gets developed, it's in an R-1250 zone, that you'll see a three-story apartment complex that would make economic sense to build on the site. Nevertheless, the letter of support states, "The purpose of this letter is to express our support and approval for the project. We feel that this would be a good use of these very prime properties for the neighborhood in bringing in quality living environments and heated retail options." I'll hand those letters for the record in terms of the support that you can see. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to conclude my remarks. I'd like to turn it over to our architect, Song Kim, who is the Principal Design Manager with Humphries and Partners Architects. And as mentioned by Gary before, Humphries is a national multifamily architectural firm with over 300,000 multifamily units built nationwide. So I will now turn it over to Song for your presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rodney. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council. My name is Song Kim from Humphries and Partners Architects. I am the Principal Design Manager of the Newport Beach office and am also the project architect for this project we have presented here today. Since Rather briefly touched on the details of the project, I will quickly go over the highlights of the project. As Rodney had mentioned, this project is a mixed-use. We have CVS Pharmacy and its parking spaces occupying the ground level. There's Central Avenue, Wilson Avenue. CVS will have two entrances, one at the street corner and one at the back, conveniently serving the customers who are coming from their parking garage. The project proposes 52 retail parking spaces, all on the ground level, and that is seven more spaces than the city required 45. And the sidewalks from the parking garage, leading the customers into the CVS rear entry, will be covered, and they will be lined with accent pavers to guide them to the entry. Above the retail use, we have a total of 168 residential units, ranging from studios, one-bedroom, one-bath, and two-bedroom, two-bath units. We currently have nine different unit types. Some have enlarged private balconies, some have corner balconies, but all of them have views either into the courtyard we have on the second floor or out to the cityscape and the mountains. Some of the units will also have direct access to fully amenitized courtyards and also the roof terrace as well. And I'd like to spend some time describing the resort-style courtyards that we have established in the project. This courtyard centrally located not only bridges our eastern and western portion of residential building, but it provides a convenient access for our residents to resort-style pools, spa, cabanas, and less landscaping on this deck. And this experience extended into our two-story clubhouse into the interior space. We also have, on the top level, the northwest corner of our project, a rooftop amenity. The rooftop amenity will have a bar pit, barbecue, some wet bar. It's a wonderful social place with great views of the mountains to north and west. For publicly accessible open space on the ground level, we have designed these covered courtyard slash gathering places, which we will continue to refine as we work through the Stage Two design process. This section drawing summarizes the primary components of our project. That's Central Avenue here. This is our property line to the west. We have two levels of subterranean parking, serving 167 residentials. We have plus-minus 20 surplus parkings as well for our residential component. On the ground level, this will be the CVS, CVS parking. This is the alley that bifurcates two parcels. Units up above will have views down to the centrally-located courtyard, which is the most important aspect of our project. In respect to the downtown specific plan transitional zone guidelines, we have designed our building, particularly on the west side, with more breakups, additional setbacks ranging from 20 feet to 40 feet, stepping away from the residential zone, and also with projecting balconies in some of our residential units. And this is our west elevation seen from Wilson Street. As you can see, that our elevation is broken up, or the massing is broken up in smaller fragments versus our main elevation facing Central Avenue.
Mr. Kasakian, just, I'm going to go on, but just track the time.
I'm almost done with my presentation, but, well, this concludes my presentation, Mr. Mayor and the members of council. Thank you very much.
I wasn't going to give it again.
Yeah, this is our dusk and rendering scene from the street corner. The intent of the architectural design, I should probably add this, is a modern interpretation of Italianate architectural style.
Italian what?
Italianate style. Our intention is to create a piece of architecture that's more soothing rather than stimulating, more universal than eclectic, and more embracing than selective. And therefore, our building has a presence of more residential than commercial. And I believe that this architectural style we have established here will accentuate the architectural experience along Central Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll be available if you have any questions.
And now we have Mr. Richard Worthington. Are you speaking? As part of the team.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm going to reserve my time for possible responses to staff or any questions there may be. But thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Aram Kasazian. Three minutes.
And my name is Aram Kasazian. What concerns me the most at this point is, we have 167-unit apartments here. We have 15,100 square feet commercial. The commercial with 42, 43 parking spaces for that drugstore and liquor store is not even half what's required to, you know, the needs. If you figure that as a medical space, you need a total of 76 spaces. You have 34 spaces as guest parking. So if you take the 303 parking spaces that's provided, and you deduct the 34 guest parking and 76 is required, you only have, you only have, what do you call, 141 spaces short what's required for this building. So 303 minus the 34, 76, that gives you 193 parking spaces. You take the 167 units, deduct that, only gives you 26 units have two parking spaces. The rest only have one parking space. Let's not kid ourselves, not lie to anybody, okay? You have 167, 26 have two, the balance only has one parking space, people, and you have zero setback, which this requires a 20-foot setback in the zone. You're ignoring that setback, too. Now, we lost, we lost 60 parking spaces, public parking spaces, right across the street from the Marriott Hotel. Marriott Hotel, which requires 385 parking spaces, only provided 39 parking spaces. Let's not kid ourselves. What's going on here? Where are people going to park? As I said, we're going to hold, push the brakes on. We're not going to go as fast as them, and we're going to stop. And I guess we're not stopping. So where is the, where is the stop? He said that, he said it over and over again, and we're not going to do it. I know some other ones are going to vote, everybody's going to vote for him, most probably. But, you know, this area is going to be destroyed for life. There's no parking. The street is full. And these people, remember, they can get preferential parking permits. So Wilson cannot absorb 160-some parking spaces on Wilson to be parked, plus the 60 we lost, plus all the other residences that don't have the sufficient parking already. They're suffering right there. Wilson is the, is bottleneck. What are we doing here? This should have a full environmental impact report attached to this. You know, Ms. Friedman, I went to your, what do you call, 460 forums. I asked you at a time when you voted on the hotel if there was any contribution, and you said no, because your forum was not filed. But I see the developer had given you contributions on your forum, yes. You know, I have all the forums in here, and you do have contributions by developer. Aram Najarian refused himself because he did have contributions, but your forum has it, too. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mike Mohill.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Mike Mohill. I don't want to be redundant of what Mr. Kasazian has said, but I'd like to bring up a couple of points. Number one, Councilman Najarian, at several of the candidate forums, you said, when it came to more construction of condos and apartments in downtown Glendale, you said, "I'm putting on the brakes. No more development." That was about in March, I think, of this year. Can we hold you to that, Mr. Najarian?
Vote's coming up.
Can we hold you up, sir? That's number one.
Mr. City Attorney.
Number two.
This isn't discussing the project at all.
Number two, I may have my time here.
Hold on, hold on. I asked-
You hold my time, please, then?
Hold his time.
Thank you.
He's personalizing this on who gave money to what. We're here for design review.
Mr. Mayor, he's advocating a position, inquiring of Mr. Najarian to take a position that he believes may have been consistent with the position he stayed publicly. It's all fair game for purposes of this hearing.
And, Ms. Friedman, too, eh?
I think that other comment was out of line.
I'm on.
My comment to Mr. Najarian is nothing about campaign contributions. It's about holding to what he said at a council meeting. He said, "Enough is enough downtown building," and I want to hold his feet to the fire. That's number one. Number two, we don't need any more apartments or commercial. If anything, let's take that piece of real estate and make it a park or a soccer field for the kids down there. The kids down there, I'm sure in that region, would love to see a soccer field or a park rather than another apartment building or a CVS pharmacy. The people who are here tonight to present this project don't live in Glendale. They're going to build and leave, and the residents of Glendale will have to say, "Well, that's it. We didn't, we voted for these council people, and they thought about us first." Or do they think about us last when they go ahead and approve this project? This project should go down, because we don't, we have to absorb right now over 2,000 new apartments in the downtown area, and there's not enough parking. The infrastructure of the city is down. Where is going to do the, what are we going to do for the, for sewer, for electricity, water? We're going to, we're going to keep Brand Boulevard in Central and go ahead and, and no longer make those wide streets? We're going to make them shorter? This project needs to go down, 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 because we have enough construction in the city of Glendale. And as a longtime resident, I hope the people in Glendale remember how you people vote tonight, because they forgot how you voted when you raised the electric rates recently. Thank you. My name is Mike Mohill.
Sam Manukian, can you follow that?
Go listen.
Last speaker.
I really thought elections were over. I really, really thought it was-
No, the elections go on every week. My name is Sam Manukian, and first of all, if anybody wants to pay their property tax on these properties and donate it as a park, by all means. When they pay it, they can donate it. And if that is destroying Central, please come and destroy my house, because I got to tell you, ICSC is coming up in a couple of days, and I happen to be talking to one of the mayors from a, I won't name the city, and he asked me a question. He said, "Why are you able to attract developers and developments where we continuously get shot down after providing incentives?" And my answer to that is, because we had the council and the planning department who envisioned this and would thought about it, planned it, and now you're getting the results. You're doing something right to be able to attract developers of this caliber and tenants like CVS, and you are not destroying Central. This is something that you're going to be very proud of, and so is the community. Thank you. I have a couple of questions from staff first, who wants to speak. Mr. Hagani? Then I'll give you three minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. Mayor.
Question one. Did we or did we not spend more than 10 years developing a downtown specific plan which included environmental documents, which this project is within, and set all the standards in public, with public meetings and public input?
Yes, we did, sir.
Thank you.
Numerous meetings.
And, second question. Explain about the parking. Is Mr. Kasazian right or wrong?
At this point, this project proposes to actually provide more parking than required by code.
So Mr. Kasazian is wrong?
That would be inaccurate. If there's an assumption that this is underparked, that would be inaccurate. It's actually, the parking is more than the code requires.
Thank you. Okay, now rebuttal. Do you want to address any other points?
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, two things. One is, obviously, it's been clarified that we actually exceed the parking requirements. That's the first one. The second one is a statement that was made about, do, this project needs a full environmental document. Well, it is providing a full environmental document, which is something you will see in Stage Two. Thank you very much.
I have a question for-
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, sure. Mr. Hagani, yes. You can sit down.
For anyone on that team. So the question is that staff has recommended approval with a lot of conditions. And my question is, are you willing to meet those conditions, given that they pretty much come down to a complete redesign of the building? Or is the developer really in love with the design of this building?
And then additionally, beyond, I'd like to run through the conditions. I haven't seen this many conditions put on a project lately, so I like them-
That's my first question, then I have a follow-up question.
Good.
Okay, if, if I can answer, or, please.
Hi, for the record, Rich Worthington with the Melaskey Companies. In response to your question, Councilwoman, I think most of these conditions can be worked through with staff. There is one that is very problematic, and I believe that is condition number one. And the reason for that is there's a logical orientation of the buildings, given the site constraints in the alley, and our necessity to provide these resort-style sort of high-quality amenities, the pool, the gardens, the spa, the cabanas. If we didn't have the buildings organized the way that they are on the site plan as they're presented and we're seeking approval, we would have to provide those amenities in two separate buildings, and the physical space is not there to accommodate that. So there's a, there's, there's quite a bit of thought that goes into the logical organization and placement of these buildings. Staff, I believe, refers to them as Cs or Us, facing each other. And the reason for that is we have to bridge that alley so that residents in the westernmost building can access the extensive amenities that are provided in the easternmost building and vice versa. And so I, I hope that that addresses your question. So just to recap and to be clear, condition number one is very problematic and likely a sort of deal killer for us. The rest, we believe, we can work with staff to resolve.
And then your deal with CVS, what's the relation between that and any approval you would get or not get today? Is there any relationship, or is CVS a done deal?
CVS is not a done deal. Obviously, their lease is subject to approval today, and the drive-through is a major component to that, to that approval and to their lease. It's a major element for them. Otherwise, I think we're, you know, if we get approval today, I think our CVS lease is on and solid.
Let me ask Mr. Hagani a question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
My question for you is, will this be coming back if it's approved today for a Stage Two?
Today, it's not being approved for Stage Two, only Stage-
No, I'm saying, if it's, if it's approved today, will it come back for a Stage Two review?
It will come back for Stage Two.
So we'd have another bite at the apple with this project in terms of design, that sort of thing?
You would, you would be having another bite at that.
Okay.
And if I may-
Yes.
Because the, the previous speaker said something about condition number one, I, I'd like to get your attention to the very last sentence under condition number one, the very last part of that sentence, "Or other solutions not previously considered." Condition number one is extremely important as far as staff is concerned, that the massing and the scale meets the transition zones' intent. And if the suggestions we've provided are not acceptable, we think we still need to explore other suggestions and ideas. We do think condition number one is extremely important.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cintero.
Okay.
Mr. Hagani, you better-
I'm going to start with comments. I may have questions later.
Okay.
Let me say how pleased I am with this design, and specifically how pleased I am that this company has chosen to do their first project in the city of Glendale. As I actually went on the internet and researched the company, I was very impressed with what they've done in their 65-year history, continues to be a family-owned and controlled company. And as was mentioned, they have over 5,000 units that they have built and continue to operate. So they're not building to flip, they're not a REIT that it's going to turn around and perhaps be bought out and become part of another entity. So I think they're building a quality building, and it's a building that will continue to stay with a, with a very positive standard of maintenance, et cetera. In terms of the corner and how it fits into the rest of what we're doing in the downtown, I think it's an excellent design for the west part of Central. As you drive down Central, coming off the freeway, and you begin to look to your right, you'll see a number of buildings that are kind of older in style. They're not like the more modern look that we have on the east side of Central, the new developments that are taking place. So I think this building, on this particular corner, I think is a wonderful addition. In terms of the design and the step back from the west, I think it's of particular interest that that property owner is very much into this design, so we don't have to, we don't seem to be having any opposition from the adjacent property owner. And while perhaps we can try to step back, or like Mr. Hagani says, try to do some type of modification, I agree with the speaker when he talked about the amenities are on one side of the project and, and units, or most of the units on the other. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. But overall, I'm very pleased that this building will hopefully get built. I think it's going to be a wonderful, and this, by the way, my feeling is that this is a different type of tenant. I think we're looking for younger tenants, different type of demographic in some of the other units that we built in the downtown. I just have a feeling from the architecture itself and even the location that this may be a little different, a little different tenant. It's obviously going to be a high-end development, and so I'm sure we're going to get some high-end tenants. But I continue to be a supporter of the downtown. I'm not into building, if it were up to me, we wouldn't build one more unit in the rest of the, in the rest of the city. I think we're overbuilt in our multifamily neighborhoods, but not in the downtown. We've been trying to, and we are finally succeeding in, in doing an 18-hour downtown where people live here and, and work nearby, walk to work, et cetera, et cetera. This is just one more piece of the puzzle, so I support the project 100%.
Thank you. Are there any other comments before? I have all the conditions read here, so I know what I'm voting on. Excuse me, want to make comments? Okay, stand by, staff. When it gets to me, I want them all read in. Mr. Najarian.
So this isn't the first project that has come before us in the past two years. It has been my stated opinion that staff generally is excessively lenient in the design features and the design aspects of a building. I have been very disappointed many times with staff. However, what we see before us today, and we'll hear that shortly, is a laundry list of deficiencies in this building. And this is from a staff that I think is, bends over backwards many times to accommodate the developer. So we've got a, we've got a list here where even our own staff says that it is the wrong design for the project. Now, I don't know what else we need to hear as a city council than our own staff telling us this building has problems. I did not hear anything from the adjacent landowner who's staring up at a five-story building that he's okay with the project. That was not presented. He was not presented here. There's nothing in the record at all that says that person is okay with that. So to presume and to say that the adjacent landowner, not to mention everyone else on that block, is okay with this, I think it's a misstatement of the facts. There is nothing before us that says that, unless there have been private conversations, which I have not been a party to. This is too much for the area. I have said that I want to put the brakes on development because we have thousands, hundreds of units coming on, total of 2,000. They're not all built yet, but coming on. We have no idea what the impact is going to be on our city. We have no idea. And to approve a project at this point without seeing the cumulative effect of all these units would be a malfeasance, a malfeasance on the part of the council. I have called for a moratorium. I got some chuckles from the realtors in the back. I am firmly of the belief that we are overbuilt downtown. I'm firmly of the belief that we are saturated with the number of luxury apartments that are going to come in. I don't know what these are going to rent for, but they're probably $2.50 a square foot. These are super expensive apartments. They are not going to fill up. We're going to be facing a lot of problems. Now is the time for us to slow down and at least require a sensitive design as it interfaces our residential neighborhoods. We have to stop. Council has to stop at this point. I haven't even gotten into the parking analysis where the retail parking is being shortchanged and combined with, with the residential parking. Is this, is this list of subcontractors up to date? Has the, this is up to date? So there's no other, let's say, are there any other real estate professionals that have been retained by the group at this point? No other real estate professionals? Okay, that's interesting. Those are my comments, and I will wait to hear the, actually, I believe that planning staff's review and discussion of the conditions should have come earlier on in this discussion to put it all in context, but that's your discretion, Mr. Mayor, as to when you want them to come in. I will, I will wait to hear them, and I hope everyone listens very carefully to the comments of our staff, who has clearly indicated they want a hip 18-7 downtown. And the comments and criticisms you hear are from folks that want nothing more than to build out a creative and vibrant downtown. These will be their comments when they come forward.
Just to be clear, I mean, I believe we have a letter at hand here from the people that own the property next door.
Where is that?
Jack Taylor, Dorothy Taylor and a joint living trust. They're the owners of 326 West Wilson.
I guess it doesn't matter who owns it, it's the residents that, that are the real-
Well, I think the property owner should have a say in what's going into, obviously, their investment.
Thank you, Mr. Saniani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I'm utterly confused by this parking situation, and I have to take our staff's word for granted, that the parking requirement is not only satisfied, but it's surpassed. So I don't understand where this confusion is coming from. And one day, I'm happy to sit down with you, Mr. Kasazian, you explain to me, but I can't imagine Mr. Hagani misrepresenting facts right now. So with, with that in mind, in terms of this building and its location, now, I wasn't here when downtown specific plan was discussed and approved, but I like it. I think it's a forward-thinking plan. I think it, it's a future, you know, it's directed towards what, what our joint vision of the future of Glendale is, and I think this building is a component of that plan. Now, there may be some changes made to the building, refinements made, but I don't think it changes the fact that the presence of this building in this location is not abnormal. It's, it's normal, and I like the location. I like the fact that there's going to be a CVS pharmacy in the part of Glendale where it's going to be filled with people who are going to need the services of the CVS pharmacy. Again, in terms of whether we've, we're overdeveloping or underdeveloped, I mean, this is a market economy. I think the market decides whether there is a need or there is a demand for condos or apartment units. And the fact that all these developers still want to come to Glendale and develop properties means that there must be demand, otherwise why would they, why would they invest their money? Excuse me. And as far as the, the negative impact of all this development on Glendale, again, I, I hear about how we're, we're reaching the point of catastrophic overdevelopment, or we've already reached it, but I don't see it. I mean, I don't see it. Yes, there's construction going on, yes, from time to time, there's traffic on Central and Brand. I work on Brand in downtown, I deal with it every day, but it is not of catastrophic nature. It's not, and it's temporary. And each of these projects has an environmental report, which, which shows that it's not, it's not bad. It's not going to have a bad impact on Glendale. And if it turns out all of a sudden that it, all this development has, has a horrible impact on the city of Glendale, that means that all these environmental impact reports were garbage. So that, that's another problem right there. So with that in mind, you know, I, I like, I like the building. I like its, its, you know, somewhat classic, traditional look. Again, there are conditions there, the staff, despite all the problems that my colleagues pointed out or, or that are there, the staff has, has approved, has approved or has recommended this building for approval. So that's, that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman.
Okay, so first I want to address Mr. Najarian's concerns. Two things he said. First, we don't know the impact. Well, I would beg to differ, because the city did an EIR for the downtown specific plan that looked at the impact for not just the 2,000 units that we know about, but I think 4,000 or 5,000 units. So that EIR was done for, how many, I saw a hand, 5,000 units that was evaluated. So we do know the impacts. And we also know the impacts by looking next door to Pasadena, who in the past couple of years added, I believe, 5,000 units. 5,000? I know, I've asked this question about 10 times, and I keep forgetting. Just shout it out. About 5,000 units in the, just the past couple of years. And they're a smaller city than us, so we can look to Pasadena and say, what have the impacts of those 5,000 units been to that city? I think there's a little more traffic on Lake, although I don't know if that's commercial traffic, because it's a commercial street. I go to Pasadena quite a bit. I don't see the city of Pasadena clogged with traffic. I don't see it overrun with whatever's supposed to happen when you add a couple thousand units. I don't see that city having negative impacts. So we don't have to imagine or look at an EIR. We can look right next door to Pasadena and see what's happened there. And then lastly, I'll mention something that Mr. Najarian himself has brought up, that according to the last census, we lost about 10,000 residents. So we're, maybe we'll gain a couple thousand of those 10,000 that we lost, but still, we will have less people than we had just a few years ago. Where have those people gone? Well, according to the census, we've lost our younger people, primarily because we don't have housing for them. We have single-family expensive homes, and then we have older apartment buildings, a lot of which are, have been rented for years. We don't have the apartment space for the 20-somethings to move into when they want to move out of their homes, and that's what this developer is trying to bring in. And as Mr. Cintero alluded to, the reason we have this building in the downtown, besides that it's a good idea, is because it was a trade-off several years ago when the city council, many years ago, before I was on council, downzoned the multifamily areas that abutted their single-family neighborhoods all over Glendale. They downzoned those neighborhoods. These buildings could have been built, Montrose, Northwest Glendale, Verdugo, because it was zoned for this type of intensity. But they switched that, built that capacity to the downtown because it could better absorb it. And they had to reabsorb that housing when they downzoned in order to get the city's housing plan approved by the state of California. That was the trade-off that was made to protect our single-family neighborhoods. And I think it was the right trade-off, because not only did it protect those neighborhoods from that kind of development happening, again, right next to our, our single-family neighborhoods, but it put the development into an area that needed it, which was our downtown, which, if you think back 10 years, 15 years, was dying a slow death, was empty at 5:00, merchants were complaining, stores were going out of business. And what we're going to have now is an entirely new area of the city, an entirely new neighborhood with residences, where people can live who want to be able to walk to a CVS or a Michael Mina Steakhouse at night and be able to walk home. So I think it's exciting. Now, let's talk about this particular building. I do not like the design of this building, not because I don't like traditional buildings, I do. I don't think this building lives up to the potential that we should have on Central, which is one of our most, you know, our main thoroughfare, where I think every building should be a landmark-type building. And I don't think, with respect, I don't think this building does that. I think you could see this building somewhere in a neighborhood in Las Vegas. It wouldn't look out of place, really kind of in a lot of places, but to me, this is not a signature, the signature architecture that we're looking for with innovative design, exciting design, and also with quality materials. I'm very much on the fence, because this is a design review of returning this for redesign, but I'm concerned about the developer losing their CVS tenant, because I think CVS would be an excellent addition to this neighborhood. So I'm willing to approve this as long as all of those conditions are met, but when this comes back for a Stage Two, I won't be so forgiving. I really, I've seen some of the other projects that are in the portfolio- I really, I've seen some of the other projects that are in the portfolio from the developer. I would like to see higher-quality materials, materials that are not just stuck-on, stucco. To me, this looks like it could be a Days Inn somewhere. This, to me, does not say a building that I want to live in or that I want in our downtown. So I'm not so kind to the design. I think we really are looking for our buildings in our downtown core to go that step beyond, to be that signature building that you'll put on the cover of your portfolio because it's so exceptional. And I'm not seeing that here, and I will not vote for it the next time it comes unless staff assures me that we're going to get that. So I'm on the fence, but because of the CVS tenant, I'm going to give you that benefit of the doubt, and I'll vote for it today. But when it comes back for stage two, if staff doesn't tell me that they're satisfied with every condition, particularly materials, you know, that sort of, I think that there's... The condition number two about architectural aesthetic, that they're satisfied with that, I will vote against it, and adamantly so, because I do think that in our downtown, we should expect the best. This is not the best we can get. This really could be a lot of generic buildings all around the country, and we should demand more. So I will ask my colleagues to join me in not only supporting all the conditions, but at telling the developer that we will not support this one on stage two unless those conditions are met.
I've asked for all the conditions to be read in. I'm going to look to the developer and see which ones can be worked in. This is conceptual phase one, so I'm not jumping the gun at this stage. So if there's no more comments, my turn. Okay?
Oh, before you do, I have a mini comment, and that is, in terms of the downzoning, this historical issue that Ms. Friedman referred to, we did more than just protect single-family neighborhoods. We protected multifamily neighborhoods that were completely and utterly built out, and the kind of architecture that most of those developers, you know, used years ago, back in the 70s and 80s, they changed the character of Glendale forever. We didn't want to do that anymore. We have a strong code enforcement component here in the city of Glendale. We beefed up our code enforcement, community development, and decided to go with a downtown approach, and I continue to feel that's the best thing that we could have done in this city.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero. I remember this came up with North Brand and North Central with those multifamily areas, which are multifamily but have so much character, and there's so many historic buildings there. And I was so proud of the council back then. I wasn't on it, but I was so proud of you and Mr. Weaver and everyone that was on council when you chose to protect those multifamily neighborhoods from overdevelopment. But this, for the public to understand, this was the trade-off.
Okay. Is everyone done? Good. My turn. Mr. Hagani or Mr. Loomis, start with condition one. I want to know what I'm voting for.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to start reading with, because you said, condition number one, which is on page four of the staff report.
Right.
I will, wanted to say two things before beginning. There's reference to the West Building and the East Building. That is because the building is, the project is sort of two separate buildings separated by the north-south alley. Condition number one, the site plan mass and height of the West Building shall be redesigned such that majority of the building's bulk does not face west towards the adjacent R-1250 multifamily neighborhood, perhaps by reversing the plan so the courtyard opens west or north rather than east or through another solution previously, not previously considered.
Okay, and that's one that developer says is a killer, and I happen to agree, because I can't get the courtyard if I can't go over the alley. I can't get that synergy in there. So I hear you, and I heard what they said. Condition two, please.
Condition two, the architectural aesthetic, massing, height of the West Building should be more distinct in style, treatment, tectonics, colors, et cetera, than the East Building.
I'm working towards stage two. Architect and the team live with this condition? They're signifying yes. Condition three.
The facade of the West Building, as it fronts Wilson Avenue, shall be set back at least 10 feet from the property line from the ground level up, i.e., the upper floors shall not overhang the setback, in contrast to the East Building, which may utilize arcades at the property line.
Design team, can you live with that and work with staff on that? Hold on, Mr. Loomis. I mean, this is what they want, and you know what you can do. It's a compromise in essence, but can you work with staff? It's not a project killer.
We'll work with staff on it.
They'll work with staff.
For the record, and I think they've already stated this, that they believe they can comply with all the conditions.
I want to go over each one.
All the conditions.
I understand, but I just want, if you want to actually get them on the record, you have to actually have them come up. So I suggested you have Mr. Loomis go through that.
Do you come up, go back to condition two? Are you acceptable? Please state. So stand beside him.
Gary Frye, yes.
Okay. Condition three. Two, one, we already know. You already said. Two, you just said okay. Condition three, can you work with staff?
Yes.
Okay. On the record.
What'd you say about one? One they can't?
It's a killer.
One would be a deal killer for us.
I think, sir, but just with all due respect and...
And what are we going through? It's a deal killer.
I think that the point from Mr. Hagani that maybe supersedes all of this discussion is that the last line of condition one, as read by Mr. Loomis, is that any other solution not previously considered. I would venture a guess that Mr. Frye and his team are going to say yes, even up to and including number one, because if they can't meet any one of those, they simply won't come back for phase two, as opposed to asking him to say, do you propose to give us the best project possible? And Mr. Frye most certainly will tell you, yes.
My next step can come back and make this recommendation, and I can choose to vote against the staff recommendation.
Understanding that because we hold out hope, and as a caveat, that there is a solution that has not yet been identified between the developer and the city staff, that whatever it is that we're talking about here may very well be moot because said suggestion and solution would come after the fact.
Okay. You'll work with staff on one, too, and you may come back and tell us you can't do it again at stage two, because with stage two, it's going to be new plans if you can't. If you can't, we're going to see the same thing.
Well, again, we would agree to the last sentence, but not the first two of rotating the buildings. So something that has not been discussed before, we would be agreeable to that, but not the whole condition of rotating the building.
Okay, we got that on the record.
And just for the record, that word says perhaps, so it wasn't actually a requirement.
Yeah, I saw the word perhaps in there. Okay, condition four.
The ground level of the East Building, as it fronts Wilson, and I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to read this, this really should read the West Building, not the East Building. So starting over the ground level of the West Building, as it fronts Wilson, shall include adequately designed, active, quote, "people spaces," such as a resident lounge slash amenity spaces, leasing office, or stupid access apartments.
And can you work with that with staff?
Yes.
Thank you. Condition five.
Facade details that suggest stone or brick, such as cornices, window sills and surrounds and arcades, shall be made out of stone or brick, not styrofoam moldings or other simulated materials.
Can you work with that?
We would agree with that.
Good, because that's what I want, too. Condition six.
Condition six, the Central Avenue facade of CVS shall be made of storefront windows with visibility into the store, not display vitrines, tinted glass, or high windows.
You agree on that?
With a certain extent, but we have to work within CVS's merchandising plan that would work and be acceptable, but we are willing to bring that back up to the stage two.
Work with staff and reach a compromise. Okay, seven.
Both CVS entrances shall be opened and usable during business hours.
We agree with that, and honestly thought that would be a stage-two condition, but that is in our lease today.
Thank you. Is there any more condition? No, eight, nine, 10, or comments? There's no other conditions, are there?
No, seven conditions followed by three comments.
I counted 10. Okay. Thank you very much, both of you. As for me, I'm just an engineer, but I like the design. I'm not an architect. So for me, it's different. It's different than some of the others. The quality of the material is the only thing I want proved on. I like the design. CVS is going to be great down there. The people that live in the surrounding residential neighborhoods to the west can walk there for so many things that'll be in that pharmacy. Rite Aid, as you know, at the Americana, has closed, and they're clear up on Glendale Avenue. So I think CVS will be the closest, nicest pharmacy in the whole area down there, and that includes the Americana, as far as I know, and the Galleria. So makes sense in having the drive-through. If you have a child or somebody that gets sick at night and you have to go down to them, be able to drive in, drive around and pick up the medicine you need and leave, I think it's a great convenience, especially when it's raining outside. Won't have to get out of your cars, leave your kid or whatever in the car. The rentals, the market will dictate. Yes, we're building a lot, and if they don't fill up, the builders will naturally lower the rents till they can get the vacancies filled that they have. It's common sense. As far as traffic, people keep confusing commercial with housing or residential. Commercial, you go down on Brand at 8:00, 9:00 in the morning, try to drive it. Try to drive it at 5:00, 6:00 in the afternoon. Everybody arrives at work within relatively same time and leaves relatively the same time, compressing the streets with car after car after car. Residential, people come and go all day and night. You don't have the massive traffic jam. Now, the traffic study will indicate that, hopefully. I know when we did the master planning, and this does not exceed heights that we approved in the downtown specific plan. Right, Mr. Hagani? I'm accepting his word for that without him coming up. Traffic design, I think Mr. Kozasian ought to go over to the planning department, because every project that comes, he criticizes the parking inside. So maybe he should go have a meeting with Mr. Hagani and his staff and get educated on what we require in the different zones for parking, because he obviously doesn't get it. Either he's right and staff is wrong. Can't be both. So I choose to agree with staff. You can argue it's too high on the western front, but, you know, I live in a nice house, and I have a beautiful view out the front of the house, out of my bedroom and my living room, clear across the canyon. Beautiful view. You know how many times I look at it? Not that much. I'm on the other side of the house in the rooms we have on that side. That's where I spend most of my time. To say that if the western side isn't stepped down more, people that are living in the houses to the west that are looking out onto Wilson are going to come out the door and look up and say, oh, my God, I can't stand that and tear their hair out. That's ridiculous. This is the western edge of the downtown specific plan and elevations. If we get the right landscaping on that western edge, tailored right, maybe some more twists on the design on that side, we'll get what we want. So I'm for it. I ask for all the conditions and the work. I only see one that's going to be a major tangle, condition one, but I'm not for turning it, because that'll destroy that podium-level open space that'll be good for kids or families to barbecue on and enjoy themselves. I think it's a great addition downtown. There ain't that many lots left and which you can develop over there. But we did do what we intended over a 10-year period. Got future development out of the hills, out of the residential, out of the, all the residential area, whether it's a single-family or multifamily. We got it downstairs. Now, we just got to continue to invigorate that downtown, that people come home, they're not going to have to drive downtown, they're going to walk to downtown. That will come slowly but surely. As far as who wants, why they want to come to Glendale, well, I cut the groundbreaking on one of the developments, and afterwards, a individual came up and spoke to me. He says, Dave, I work for a company that puts together that money that Wall Street wants to invest. And he says, there's only eight areas in this whole region that Wall Street will invest hundreds of millions of dollars in. He talked about, I think, Westlake, and they skipped over the San Fernando Valley, they skipped over Burbank and hit Glendale. They skipped over Pasadena and looked at other cities heading out towards Monrovia. That's Wall Street money. So we have a window of opportunity, a niche, didn't exist a few years ago. Yeah, maybe you could ask if he spread out over a number of years. By God, why should you turn down all private funding? And here we sit with the ability to control the design, so we get top-quality design. We don't want anything cheap. So I think this fits in with it. I think it's going to be nice for that area. And in my lifetime, I'm going to see the city I was born and raised in transformed. So with that...
I will move 1A.
Is there a second?
Well, 1A is... Thank you.
Is that the motion?
It was the second.
But that's with all the conditions.
Yes.
Yeah, for now, for now. Stage two will be different.
Full call.
All right, let's see. Motion returning this to the middle to the applicant, no, 1A.
Full call.
Move, is there a second?
There was a motion. I seconded it.
Counselmember Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
No.
Montero?
Yes.
Sananian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. And we won't be needed. So thank you, gentlemen. This particular project, we have another one, so unless you want to stay for the electrical special...
Just as exciting.
Quietly, so we can consider this important issue.
High-tech structure.
In peace and quiet. Thank you, Mr. Kozakian. Would you read in item two, A, B, C, D, and E?
Item two is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power and Director of Finance, continued from September 10, 2013, regarding Glendale Water and Power Electric Revenue Bonds 2013. 2A is an ordinance for introduction authorizing issuance of electrical revenue bonds 2013 series not to exceed $60 million aggregate principal amount payable out of the Electric Works Revenue Fund. 2B is a resolution authorizing deposit and withdrawal of the electric revenue bond 2013 series proceeds in the local agency investment fund and California State Treasury. See as a resolution declaring the intention to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the proposed tax-exempt financing for various capital improvements to the electrical system. 2 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with public financial management, Inc., to act as financial advisor in connection with the bond issuance for a total amount not to exceed $65,000. 2 is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Norton Rose Fulbright, LLP, to act as bond and disclosure counsel for a total amount not to exceed $105,000.
And as a, as a homework, we'll do 2As separately, the ordinance for introduction, and then do B, C, D, and E together if we wish.
Correct.
Mr. Choa.
Yes, sir. Last month, the council approved a multi-year electric rate increase discussed at length was the capital program that would accompany and be animated by that rate plan that was approved to the tune of $60 million that would essentially be expanded in a three-year period, with the idea being that the final two years and beyond of the capital program for GWP Electric would be paid for in a pay-as-you-go fashion. This would allow us to do the necessary infrastructure work to the tune of $60 million while allowing us to shore up the finances of GWP Electric. At this point, Mr. Elliott can give you the overview of the financing details. As you note, we have the ordinance that would authorize the bond sale, and then a series of resolutions and professional services agreements that would allow the transaction to move forward. If you have questions about the actual capital program, or if you want refresh your information from that discussion last month, certainly... from that discussion last month, certainly, Mr. Zern can answer those questions. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Bob for a brief primer, and then we can answer whatever questions.
I noticed all the people that you need to support you are here. Are you doing a pop?
It's, it's the team.
Is this a PowerPoint or?
Well, we have a PowerPoint, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for review of the capital program, if you so choose to do so. What I wanted to do is just basically cover the, the high points of the financing. As, as Scott mentioned, this is kind of the final piece of the five-year financial plan that we have worked quite some time on for GWP. The issuance of $60 million in bonds to cover the capital portion of the first three-plus years of the plan, while we then get to a Pago status in year four to cover our ongoing capital needs for the utility. As part of that, if you recall, in 2011, we did an RFP to select not only a financial advisor, but a bond counsel for not only this originally had aimed at doing this bond issue, but this was put off. We subsequently did the water issue and the electric refunding prior to this, and finally have gotten to this point of bringing this to you for approval. Again, PFM has, as financial advisor, has a wealth of experience in electric debt issuances and has done quite a bit of work, not only for the city of Glendale, but many of the SCAPI utilities. Norton Rose Fulbright as bond counsel and disclosure counsel has extensive experience in the electric industry and has experience with the city of Glendale as well. As you recall, when we have discussed debt issuances in the past, we have been trying to get this to you. I must say, when we originally planned on this, rates were quite a bit lower, not quite a bit lower, but lower. We still are very competitive rates, but they're ticking up towards 5%. As time goes on, rates seem to be edging up almost by the week. The last run we've done would have the debt issued at right around 4.9 to 5.1, depending on ultimately what we get as a rating. Our current rating is, depending on the rating agency, Fitch were A+, Moody's were AA3, and Standard &amp; Poor's is AA- last time we were rated. Moody's was stable, and Fitch were negative outlooks, only because we hadn't had done the rate plan at that time. So we're hoping for at least those ratings are higher, which would then have an impact on the interest rates. As you recall from the, the graphs and charts we showed throughout the rate plan in the debt service coverages, we would have sufficient debt service coverage to make these debt service payments that would be approximately $4 million a year for the capital needs. So with that, if you have any questions or want to review the capital needs, we have the entire team here that can answer just about any question, and I think you can throw at us, but with that, I'll...
I don't, but I'll ask Mr. Sinanian.
I have a question. These professional contracts, services contracts, did these go out to bid?
Yes, we did. We did an RFP back in July of 2011 with the intent for doing this bond issue, the water bond issue, and the electric refunding. This was supposed to be the first bond issue. We put it on hold pending all the rate, and the management change at GWP, this is ultimately coming to you last, but the intent, when we brought it to council for approval last time, we only included the water and electric refunding, knowing that we would come back to you for this. So yes, there was an RFP process in place.
And these entities were the winners?
They were, they were the winners, yes.
Thank you.
That's it. Are there any other questions? I do have a card from Arum Kazazian, who seems to have left.
I may add, if I might, Mr. Mayor, this has been a, as Scott reminded me, this is a competitive bond sale as required by the charter, so there is no selected underwriter at this point in time. They will have to go out to do a market, you know, bring it out to market, and we get underwriters to bid on the, on the debt. I neglected to say, as we move forward and get all the documents drafted, our closing timeline is towards the end of November, beginning of December.
How many times will this come back to us yet?
You'll have it come back in two weeks for final approval.
Okay. The ordinance for introduction.
Yes, today is for that introduction.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I was going to make a comment. In spite of my utmost respect for Mr. Zern and Mr. Elliott and the GWP team, to be consistent with my previous vote on this issue, I'll be voting against it.
I second that.
Okay, let's do a roll call and find out. Oh, wait. How about 2A, ordinance for introduction?
Use the ordinance at 2A.
Thank you. And now for 2B, C, D, and E. Is there a motion?
I'll move the items.
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
No.
Sinanian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. See you in two weeks.
Zern.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I adjourn at 4:26.
That's good.